Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the board event meeting. Mrs. Spunk, roll forward, please.
Dr. Cordelina?
Here.
Mr. Doltry? Mrs. Fano?
Here.
Dr. Mudra?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Rappaport?
Here.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Grau?
Here.
Mr. Arena?
Here.
Mr. Rizin?
Here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands foundation under God, in his law, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which their business is affected or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Monmouth Township Board of Education provided a public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location that was posted at the Monmouth Township Municipal Building, all Monmouth Public Schools, the Monmouth Public Library, the Monmouth Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, and advertised in the Daily Record, the Board's official newspaper, on February 5th, 2022.
Thank you. Gentlemen, who would like to lead us off?
So, the spring season is underway. The baseball team started off their season with a win over Randolph last Friday, 1-0 behind a stellar pitching performance from Ian Kaiser and David Patillo. The boys have big expectations this year and will play host to a top Pope John team tomorrow at 4:15. The softball team is off to a red-hot start, winning each of their first two stints, including a 7-0 shutout with Venda last Friday. Their next matchup will be Saturday at 10:00 a.m., home versus Vernon. The boys' lacrosse team is off to a slow start, dropping their first two games at home against a tough Spur and a hand-down off team. They look to right the ship on Thursday afternoon when they travel to play Boise. The girls' lacrosse team has also stumbled a bit to start their season as they fell in Lenrog and Cranford last week. The road does not get easier as they take on a vicious Morris Mills team Thursday afternoon at home, where they look to put one in the win column. It was a great opening meet for track and field at Summit. Its place finishes consisted of the boys' distance medley, boys' pole vault relay, girls' freshman-sophomore 4x200 relay, and girls' freshman-sophomore 4x400 relay. The golf team gets their season underway this week with four matches in four days. They look to ride their returning varsity core of Colin Hulpe, Eli Kaufman, and myself. And the boys' tennis team had a tough test to start their season as they fell 4-1 to Dub Warren. They look to ride their senior leadership of Ayush Sharma this season, and their next match comes Thursday at Morristown.
Getting into some past news, looking back, the ERTS Theater Company has spectacular spring musicals with this year's performance, Grease, Adina Silverberg as Sandy. Adina Silverberg as Sandy and Joel Morso as Denny Zuko swoon audiences not everyone's excited for next year has to offer. On March 25th, the Key Club hosted a very unfulfilled marathon, raising money for Alice's alnate stand. With this year's game of Candyland, a sweet victory was taken home by John Walsh, Brian Nyskins, Pat Ferrari, Nicholas Russo, Mac Aldardo, Nick Elvis, and Daniel Arena. Lastly, the previously canceled Winter Pep Rally did a comeback this past Friday. It began with an amazing performance by the school choir, band, and orchestra, then followed, they highly anticipated its two endeavors, back with the basketball game with loud fans and guest players such as Miss Rose Farther himself. In the end, the faculty were victorious. Tomorrow, April 6th, is the World Language National Honor Society induction ceremony, where select juniors will be inducted into their respective world language honor societies. Then, next week brings the end of the third marking period on April 11th and the beginning of spring break for kids' events on Good Friday on April 15th. Not to forget, senior portraits of the class of 2023 begin on April 25th, the day of return for the break.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Any questions of our student reps? Well, I don't think that there are many games the end of this week with all the rain protected now, but hopefully you guys on the golf course will all be able to get some time in, because never rains on the golf course. Gentlemen, thank you very much, and have a good evening. Next part of our agenda, the superintendent's report.
Yes, we do have the update on the third quarter, for the third quarter on the district goals for this year. I'm not going to read through that. We have made a lot of good progress towards those goals as we are in the last quarter of the year. We do tonight have some wonderful, exciting things to celebrate. We have a number of folks here, and I'm going to start off with Douglas Depp, who is our guidance counselor at Woodmont School. Doug was recently recognized as the Morris County Counselor of the Year. He was actually nominated by one of his district colleagues, Heather Powell, counselor at Cedar Hill School. This is a tremendous honor. We know that Doug does exceptionally wonderful work in terms of how he assists with the dinner booths that he operates at Woodmont, his extensive support, not only in our district but throughout the state of New Jersey with school character. So, we're fortunate to have Doug here at Woodmont, but Morris County has taken notice as well, so congratulations, Doug. Our next honorees, I'm not sure, I think the high school probably had to install another trophy case for the hardware that you guys managed to accumulate over the course of your season. It was phenomenal. Just to highlight their accomplishments, the team this year was conference champs. They were also the NJAC tournament champion team. They were the Morris County Tournament runner-up. They were the NJSA Group Two State Championship team. And in the tournament champions, they ended up being seeded number three, which is quite an accomplishment. So, we are very proud of footy model on the map on the way, so congratulations to the bowling team. I now would like to invite Mr. Nazak to the mic. We are going to honor our ShopRite Stars for the most recent March parade, and this is always a highlight for us when we hear about tremendous accomplishments of these students at the high school. Mr. Nazak, so here.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. I'm thrilled to present our ShopRite Stars for the third marking period of the 2021-2022 school year. Tonight's stars were nominated by faculty members in a wide range of categories, and the winners were selected by administrative committee. In addition to the recognition of these wonderful students, Sunrise ShopRite generously donates $1,000 to the class of 2022. Please join me in congratulating each of our stars this evening. In the field of academics, congratulations to Hannah Shannen. Staff members who nominated Hannah for this award describe the students devoted to her studies, passionate about learning, and a role model for fellow classmates. As demonstrated by the classes Hannah has taken during her time at NTHS, she embraces challenge and personal growth. For example, when Hannah was a freshman, she took a single honors level class. Driven by a love for education, Hannah has taken five AP classes over the course of the past two years and proudly maintains a 4.3+ GPA. Despite the time she dedicates to her studies, Hannah has been an active participant in our school and local community. Specifically, Hannah is the senior manager of the NTHS volleyball team, vice president of REACH, secretary of the Spanish Honor Society, inductee into the National Honor Society, one of the first students involved in our Cultural Diversity Club and Peer Mentoring Program, assistant art editor of the Muse, and member of the Yearbook staff. Hannah is also a dedicated violinist, volunteer through time at the Heinrich Jewish Center, and hopes to one day win the Nobel Peace Prize. Hannah is still deciding on which college to attend in fall, attends the double major in Business and Political Science on a pre-law track. In the field of athletics, congratulations to Aaron Curzey. Aaron has greatly contributed to the success of our wrestling team during the course of the last four years. Specifically, Aaron was an important member of the team when we won the North One Group Three State Section Championship in 2019 and 2020, and ultimately, the Group Three State Championship in 2020. This year, Aaron led the team to a 12-5 record and a third-place finish at the Morris Mills Tournament, fourth-place finish at the San Cali Tournament, second-place finish at the District Tournament, yes, I'm sorry, the District Tournament, and sixth-place ranking in Region Two. Individually, Aaron has won almost 100 matches for his career, is a two-time district champion, second-team All-Conference, and three-time state qualifier. During his senior year, Aaron went 28-5, took first place at the San Cali Tournament, second place at the Morris County Tournament, second place at the Region Two Tournament, was the District Six Tournament Champion, and finished top 12 in the entire state at his weight class of 132 pounds. Aaron is a selfless captain, described by coaches and teammates as someone who goes out his way to make those around him better. Aaron has committed to attend Rutgers, University of the Fall, where he will wrestle at the Division One level. In the field of the arts, congratulations to Adina Silverberg. As she walks around, making a good idea to get Adina's autograph before the end of the night, because at any moment, her career could really take off. Adina has raised her stage through numerous acting and musical performances, including at four Broadway acts, three spring musicals, and two folk plays, including one where she was the drama assistant director. Since 2019, Adina has served as the vice president of the Tri-And Music Honor Society, and since 2020, she's been president of the Monmouth Theater Company. In addition, Adina has volunteered to play piano at the Chelsea Senior Center and Lincoln Art Renaissance Nursing Center, and raised funds to support various local causes through her participation in Pathway Rock Band and the Barn Theater. Perhaps most exciting, Adina wrote, recorded, produced, and released several original songs through Spotify and YouTube, and iTunes recently. Last month, Adina performed her final NTHS spring musical, Grease. The show was phenomenal, but several past weeks became ill after countless exhausted hours of rehearsal and the weeks leading up to the performance. Adina's character was the female leader Sandy, and in a truly beautiful moment, she invited the audience to sing along with her because she began to use her voice. Adina will continue giving the gift a song in the fall as she attends the Frost School of Music at the University of Miami, she will major in the music industry. In the field of community service, congratulations to Katie Gallo. Katie has volunteered campus hours to our school and local community in mainly one of two ways, through her exemplary work as president of the Key Club as a cadet on the Monmouth Township First Aid Squad. Regarding the former, Katie has been an active participant in the Key Club the past few years and has earned a gold award for each because she has greatly exceeded the number of service hours required for membership. Despite the fact that our two previous school years have been impacted by COVID, Katie still found opportunities to give back. For example, Katie has been instrumental in developing teacher appreciation activities and meeting events such as the volleyball marathon and the Thanksgiving food drive. This last mission in particular is a school-wide event that really takes a lot of planning and coordination. Additionally, while many of the items we receive are donated to the Monmouth Food Committee, we also deliver food boxes to 30 local families in need. Katie was instrumental in the success of our food drive this year as we collected almost 1,500 items. As a cadet on the First Aid Squad, Katie gains experience in emergency care and is regularly called upon to provide assistance to people in urgent need. In addition to her service to our community, Katie is the treasurer of the Culture University Club, member of the Science Amogia, and inductee into the National Honor Society and Spanish Honor Society. In the fall, Katie will attend the University of Rochester, major in Biology, on a pre-med track with the goal of becoming a physician. In the field of leadership, congratulations to Asta Desai. Asta identified the need for a club at the NTHS, and would ask students to collaboratively research and discuss potential careers in memory. It takes a great deal of time, effort, dedication, perseverance, and leadership to start this club from scratch. Asta worked directly with her principal, Mr. Centurion, to ensure that the club would run if she could demonstrate interest from prospective members. From serving classmates and developing admission to supervising members, Asta has demonstrated the leadership necessary to ensure the success of HOSA, Future Health Professionals Club. In addition to giving our students the opportunity to discuss the health industry in the back corner of classrooms, HOSA helps promote the health industry with, promotes career opportunities, I apologize, in the healthcare industry, and strives to enhance quality of healthcare to all people. Despite the fact that Asta will leave us in a few months, the club represents one small part of the legacy of NTHS and will continue to run in the 2022-2023 school year. In addition to the club, Asta has served in a leadership capacity in FBLA, Key Club, and peers as leaders. Outside of school, Asta is a dance instructor for children ranging from ages three to 11, and credits this experience to learning the importance of developing relationships and being a role model for others. In the fall, Asta will attend Drexel University and major in Health Sciences in the prestigious Physicians Assistant REACH program. Again, congratulations to Asta and to all of our fellow period graduates.
We're going to take a picture of our third marking period. Congratulations again. Thank you, Mr. Nazak, for those wonderful introductions. You just make me really tired when I just see all those things because you have got those, it's really quite impressive. So, that concludes our report.
Thank you, Dr. Goldfarb. Again, coming here for board congratulations all of the recipients tonight. These are meetings we'd like to have, especially on the scholarship and the athletic team, and Chief of the Year, Counselor of the Year for Morris County. We're very proud of you. We have some good news on the agenda, but you can read it in the latest issue. Business administrator report?
No report.
Okay. Finance, Karen?
No report, except to mention to the public that on April 26th, we will have a public hearing on the school level.
Thank you, Karen. David, an immediate curriculum review?
No report.
Okay. Policy, Mr. O'Brien?
No report.
Okay. Communication, Mr. Michelle?
No report.
No report. Mr. Rappaport, split tape, did you hear?
No report.
Okay, delegates, the deputy school boards, Karen?
Thank you, Charlie. Just a couple of items. On March 18th, the board of directors conducted their meeting, and just a couple of things. The first is that the New Jersey School Board, board directors unanimously approved the Association's 2022-2023 budget, and its notable act of the 13th and consecutive year. District dues will be maintained with no increase. We also talked a little bit about the NJSPAS K12 Climate Change in Education report that was recently released, it was certainly set up live event, it's been compiled and online. In June 2020, New Jersey became the first state in the nation to adopt standards that required schools to improve climate change education across subject areas and grade levels, and the report provides assistance to educators. There is a spring symposium with dates for April 26th and April 27th. This is a two-day event that will feature more than 40 training sessions covering topics of interest to local school board members. And on March 30th, New Jersey School Boards hosted a virtual Congressional Hill visit. Normally, this visit will take place in person, but over the past couple of years due to COVID, it's been conducted virtually. We hope that next year we can make it to Washington. It's always a very exciting event. But featured in the Day on the Hill were U.S. representatives from all over New Jersey, including District 11, represented by U.S. Representative Michael Sherrill. She was able to call all of the representatives, including Tito, the school board members whose districts they represent, so really firsthand information getting to our representatives. Matt, can you put it out in the court, Charlie?
Thank you, Karen. School Board, Morris County, Mike?
No report.
Mr. Doltry's not here. Drug awareness, Mike, Palmer?
I have a list of next points there, please.
Athletic, Lucier, Mike?
They meet tomorrow, man.
Tomorrow, okay. Ladies on, Cedar Hill?
The March 16th homeschool meeting featured discussions about Happy Week, as well as the week of March 21st to 25th, Celebrate the Arts Week. There was discussion about the outdoor structure that Cedar Hill is building, as well as some fundraisers that are being hosted by the homeschool.
Thank you. Matthew, Melo Valley, do you have any information?
No, of course, Charlie.
Woodmont?
Yeah, we have a meeting on March 30th to discuss a couple of things. Nomination to next year's board, talked about the very deserving award that Doug Speck just donated, and discussed various fundraisers, hot lunch, tricky tray, family bowling night, volunteer appreciation dinner, and book fair. And I also talked a little bit about our incoming superintendent, Dr. Gorman. Everyone will have a chance to meet him in just a couple of months.
Thank you, Mike. Dave, what do I still? Dave, what do I?
The meeting was on Monday, March... Meeting was on Monday, March 21st. Meeting was very well attended, and it was a very interesting meeting. Some of the topics we'll discuss, as discussed, was the aid to Ukraine taking place among the students at the Zar. A topic was transitioning back to normalcy in, you know, in the school. It sounds like a 1920s, they had rain spoken, but it isn't. Going back to things aren't normal, and this is a big transition that'll be remembered for a long time. Here, the year end, the end of the year events we've discussed, testing schedule, and the living lessons presentations. The next meeting will be on Monday, May 16th.
Thank you, Ryan. And the high school, Michelle, or Mike?
The next meeting is Monday, May 9th. The ETC is excited that they're going to be able to talk about a return to normalcy. Have a traditional teacher appreciation luncheon, so they're working on organizing that, and parents will see an email next week with sign-ups and information about that. So, really excited to be able to do that for the teachers this year.
Thank you, Michelle. Before moving into public participation, I understand we have Assemblyman Ryan Gerber in attendance today. Ryan, can you stand up? Ryan is coming to be since the district's free align. He will be representing our district, who will come in at Tom Ryan. Usually, when a politician comes, the second time is an entrance fee.
Yeah, you're all letting too. Well, thank you for introducing, I appreciate that. As you mentioned, the district thing is done, so I got the chairman of the demo, which is really, really, really good for me. It's an exciting town to represent. My friend actually lives about 50 feet that way on John Henry Drive, so it's kind of nice to be representing you. Yeah, technically, I don't really represent the area until the next election cycle. That's just not the kind of guy I am. I'm all in all the time, so I'm here to represent you starting now. And you have the benefit now of having four assembly people and two senators, so you can do the mom-dad approach and just keep asking to get the answer you want. So, I don't typically come to board meetings, you know, because, you know, what you guys do is great work, but often it doesn't require any state interaction, so I'm always available for you at any time. If you ever want me to come to answer any questions, you want me to talk to you about anything, you want me to come into the school system to speak, you want me to help anybody, I am here to serve you. By way of background, I was a West Point grad, did some time in combat, I was an attack helicopter pilot in the U.S. Army, and my wife... My wife says she married a cool Apache pilot, and now she's stuck with me as a politician. But I love the work I do. I love being in the Assemblyman. I got a lot of energy. You'll see me everywhere after tonight. I'll be at every event I could possibly be at, and again, I'm here to serve you, so. Yep, thank you very much, guys.
Public participation on agenda items. We have only member of the public who wants to pick out any items on the agenda. Seeing none, there is three, there's a finance addendum, which includes a couple of bits and transportation, three bits, and I think Dr. O'Carroll wants to make a change on the calendar, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes.
Do you just want to go through that?
Before you, before the 14th section, I'm recommending a revision to the proposed calendar, and that revision is that on April 22nd, the district would have a priority dismissal for all grade levels, and school would be closed on Tuesday, April 23rd, and they are both to honor the Passover observance.
Thank you, Renee. May I have a motion on the agenda, please? So move. Second?
Second.
All right, any questions on item I? J? K? L? P-J-A-K-L? M? And that's about it, all right? The vote board, which includes the addendums, and the change that Dr. O'Carroll mentioned.
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Mrs. Fanna?
Yes.
Dr. Cordina?
Yes.
Dr. Bodrack?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Notice the basics, yes, and everything else.
Mr. Brown?
I'm not sure, I think I missed that meeting. Did you check? If I missed it, I'll abstain. Along the minutes. I was there, okay, oh, yes, thank you. There's no reason to go into closed sessions, mate. Any whole business? General board, I'll start off with, I'd like to recognize Detective Scott Cowan. You received an award from the Monfort County Chamber of Commerce, you received the Public Safety Award at the last, at the convention that was held at the end of March. And all of you are most of the male detective, Cowan is our SRO officer, and he's been with us several years now. We'd like to congratulate on being the recipient of that award. Any other general comments or new business? Okay, public participation is an opportunity for the public to ask questions, make comments, rather, on anything. Our next meeting is going to be April 26th.
And that will be in the media center of?
Media center at the high school. Seeing no press, as I would understand, a motion to adjourn, please? So move. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Thank you very much, ladies, for attending our meeting, ladies and gentlemen, and we look forward to seeing you in our next.